All right, I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, June 5th, despite the weather outside, 2023, at 6:32 PM. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. The first item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss pending legal matters. So I will make a motion to enter into executive session, discuss pending legal matters, and invite our obsessor, Kara Fishman, and our attorney, Ryan O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
Yeah, I know there's many legal issues before the town, but there's nothing with employee grievances.
This has nothing to do with personal matters. No, that would be clearly identified.
Okay, just checking. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Karaeys. All right, Karen, you can go back down to those three dots. Pause is the first one. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
That's the first thing.
That's the first thing you tell you. Turn off. Yeah.
Go back from 7:14.
Okay, so, any further discussion on the minutes from May 15th? We voted. Did we vote?
We did not.
We did not. All right, all those in favor?
As amended, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, and then we had moved to approve the minutes of our special meeting on May 19th. Right, any discussion? Rather short meeting, a whole town meeting. Seeing no discussion. I'll try all in favor. Aye. Motion carries. All right, present to speak. If you are online or in the room, we ask you to identify yourself for the record, and you'll limit your comments to two minutes. Is there anyone online present to speak? Yes, Steph. Can you unmute yourself? Can you click the down, go down, down, down? Those three, yeah. Click, yeah. Okay, now try to unmute yourself, Steph.
There it is.
Can you hear? Yes.
Thank you. I want to speak in favor of the Pride Month proclamation.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie Somers, 4Y Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the Pride Month proclamation on the agenda. And to do that, I was, I sang in a concert Saturday night, and there was a number on the program called "A Beautiful Noise." It was written by Alicia Keys and Brandy Carlisle, Lori McKenna, about eight women composers. And this is in part some lyric. "Go on and rejoice, because you have a voice. It is loud, it is clear, it's stronger than your fear. It's believing you belong, it's for calling out the wrong. I have a voice, and I let it speak for the ones who aren't yet fully free. It's killing me. No one is saying what we need to hear. I will not let silence win, not when I see all the pain our people are in. There's no other choice, because I have a voice." Thank you.
Thank you. Or anyone in the room who'd speak?
My name is Shannon Verbeau, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of item 9B on this evening's agenda, the proclamation for Friday night. I read the statement on behalf of 36 other residents who could not make it tonight, but share the same sentiment. I will read their names at the end of my statement if time allows. I was proud to see this item on the selectmen's agenda. As for the last few years, as a resident of this town, I've seen a concerning trend towards the lack of acceptance by a small but very vocal group. Surely, our community can do better. I hope that this step by the Board of Selectmen will put us back on the right track. Supporting Pride Month does nothing more than support the fundamental human right to exist as who you are. Supporting the LGBTQ community does nothing more than show those individuals that we see them, that we stand beside them, that we are allies in an unkind world. I will leave you with this quote from Harvey Milk, the first openly gay man elected to public office in California. "It takes no compromise to give people their rights. It takes no money to represent the individual. It takes no political deal to give people their freedom. It takes no survey to remove repression." This is signed by Jen and Rob Sutton, Tina and Sadas Guneiras, Kristen Bryant, Kirsty and Jeff Ferrar, Don Maderno, Sarah and Bill Jean, Courtney Lavangian, Lisa and Alan Ayers, Barbara and Nick Guneiras, Lindsay and Erin Robbins, Unit and Bill Cameron, Reagan and Jim Rowley, Judy Freet, Amy Lynn, Julie Anne Marshall, Liza Boris, Kylie Foltz, Angela Maderos, Melissa McKinnon, Brianna and Jason Ross, Doris Bacon, Sandra Hughes, Trevor Gantek, Jamie Hepske, Alan Hepske, Amy Reading, and three others who just messaged me to add their names, but I didn't get them on my list. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to online. Is there anyone online? Present to speak? You should be able to unmute yourselves, and you do not have to be on camera. I'm going to go to in the room. Anyone in the room present to speak? Mr. Tal.
Name Tal, 49, just wanted to talk upon lawyer request. And maybe, this is right here, maybe we can get some answers and some stuff here. But I just want to reference Chapter 14, Section 1, Tac 212, Subsection D. Quote, "The public agency shall waive any fee provided for in this section when..." There's multiple subsections in here, but I'm going to point out two. "The person requesting the records is an indigent individual, basically lower income. Also, in its judgment, compliance with Athens requests benefits to general welfare." "The lawyer policy in town thoroughly needs to be cleaned up. After all, it's currently not complying with state statute. I called twice and was told that the town will not give any financial waiver when I call. And I called the state, and the state said no, and it even says here, 'shall.' So there's got to be some kind of policy set forth. So right now, this town is not in compliance. I also had requested four things to kind of settle out of the hearing. I asked for the waive of fees, which was approximately $100 to $200, which is plenty of justification to do so, especially with the provisions that I just mentioned. Phil requests waive a potential $250 fine. And lastly, have the Board of Selectmen work with the town people to improve the lawyer policy in town. And I was notified that this was denied because of the last thing. The town does not want to work with the people to improve the lawyer policy in town. And so, also, to me, it makes no sense for the town to continue going down a hearing when it costs the town money to pay Ryan and potentially a fee. It's much cheaper to settle outside, and also, I think we should be working with the town people. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Anyone else online present to speak? All right, seeing none, you have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We'll move on. Correspondents, there's a list of correspondents in your packet. For selectmen report, I have nothing new on the Steve Grant at the Old Town Hall. The Lots of Project, Mike Damato is managing that project. If you recall, that is the sidewalks that are going in from Hall School to the mills. This Wednesday, Mike has an onboard design meeting with CROG, the Capital Region Council of Government. They will update the design and cost estimates at that time, and then work on a DOT permit after that meeting that will begin with outreach to property owners in the area that the sidewalks will be repaired. And on top of that, as they go along, they're preparing all of the items to the package for the RFP as this process goes along. So it's being compiled and composed at the same time. ARPA, they know we have not had a meeting. We've been continuing forward with projects. I do anticipate our next meeting, that we will have a coming meeting and be hearing. We want to hear from EDC on the loans that we gave out. So if you recall, we had, I think it was about 12 grants that were between $5,000 and $15,000. The majority of them were $15,000 grants. And kind of want to hear how people have used those and have them update us on that. So look for that coming soon. And staffing, I'm happy to announce, we've hired a new Parks and Rec Director, James Callahan, comes to us from Enfield, and he will begin on Tuesday, the 20th of June. So we look forward to his tenure with the town, and he'll be here just in time for some summer concerts and summer camp. Other questions? Oh, Jim, I just wanted to talk to you in the SBC realm. You had had questions about the attorney that looked at, worked with Robin regarding the explanatory text. And so, I'd asked Robin for that information, and her emails back and forth to him on March 7th, that his only comment was changing the word "aged," because the description should be changed to "existing" because it was more neutral. So that goes to one of those things where it has to be a very neutral document. And that's one of the reasons they go over it. And he continues to say he provided the dates of construction above, so that information is already in there. Please let me know if you have any other questions. She said, "Thank you." And that's the end of that conversation. So he had gone over it and had very little feedback for her.
Good.
All right, Public Works. Troy, maybe?
So we finished grading all the dirt roads. We regraded, installed new millings at the parking lot down at the River Road Park. We had a chance to get some millings from the road from 320, so it was a good time to try to redo that parking lot. We emptied the trash at the park. We installed a new trash can at the park. Roadside mowings going on around town. We moved an air compressor from one fire department to the other fire department for the bottles for air. We moved the transfer station. We installed a new catch basin and 140 feet of drainage on St. Moritz Circle. And we patched holes around town. That's about it.
Are all of, we had been doing some catch basin cleaning with some money left over from this fiscal year's budget, and before we start into the new cycle, are they done with those?
They have about three more days, and then they'll be complete with the whole town.
All right, and then they'll continue after July 1?
Yes.
Wait longer before they do more cleaning?
No, they'll start the other side where they did left off last year. They'll do those.
All right.
I have one question for Troy. You said you put some millings down at the River Road Athletic Complex. Is that in the automobile auto area or the track?
No, we're the Cars Park, right in the parking lot here. Not on the track, no.
No, that's a different product. It's on the walk.
That's stone dust on the track.
That's all. Thanks.
No problem.
Okay. All right, anything else for Troy? All right, moving forward. I, in honor of the 100th birthday of a former first selectman, selectman, and first selectman, I'm going to move the following proclamation. 100th anniversary of the birth of Lawrence Becker. Whereas Lawrence Becker was born June 16, 1923, and has been a lifelong resident of Wellington and will celebrate his 100th birthday this year. And whereas Lawrence Becker enlisted at the age of 19 and served the Army Air Corps as a pilot in the United States Army during World War II. And whereas Lawrence Becker served as selectman from 1949 to 1953, and first selectman of Wellington from 1953 to 1963. And whereas Lawrence Becker began Becker Construction Company in 1948 and Ace Equipment Sales Inc. in 1973, both based in Wellington. And whereas Lawrence Becker has served on numerous professional community boards and generously made significant donations to Wellington groups and organizations. And whereas Lawrence Becker and his wife generously donated land that became the home of the Wellington Public Library and allowed the town to use the beach at Hall's Pond for summer recreation. And whereas Lawrence Becker is commended for his hard work, strong work ethic, continued efforts to help preserve the rural character of Wellington and contributions to the Wellington community. And therefore be it resolved that the Wellington Board of Selectmen and residents in the town of Wellington proclaim June 16, 2023, to be Lawrence Becker Day. Furthermore, I do hereby encourage all residents, family, and friends to pay tribute to Lawrence Becker on his 100th birthday and wish him health and happiness in all his days to come. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand to cause to be a fix the great seal of the town of Wellington's 5th day of June 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. We did invite Mr. Becker and his family to be here. It was important to me that we make this proclamation before his birthday. He wasn't, there was a conflict, and he wasn't able to be here. So we've been working with his daughter to complete this honor, and it will be presented to him in a separate manner, and that was at the direction of the family as well. So it's the only reason. We had hoped he'd be here, and we had cake and could celebrate him. But they chose to do so in a different manner, so I will present this to him in a different forum if it's so moved. Any other comment?
We do so few of these type of events. Is our intention going forward to honor people who've hit that centenarian mark?
I would love to. And, you know, we don't always know. We don't always know residents that are in our community that hit this important milestone. But when we do, I encourage folks to let us know so that we can properly honor folks. The last couple, well, two. So we had Mr. Erica and now Mr. Becker, who happened to be men in our community that were very well-known and were aware of their accomplishments and their age. And so it's easy to make this proclamation. But I would say if any citizen has something they'd like us to consider a proclamation, to bring it forward. Absolutely.
I would agree. I think 100 years is worth noting.
It sure is.
But particularly in the light of these two gentlemen, the amount that was contributed in those 100 years is important as well.
Yes.
I want someone that I could...
Okay, we can, I apologize. Comments, we'll save comments for the board. All right, any other further discussion on the proclamation? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Happy early birthday, and so June 16th, please, Mr. Becker. All right, the next item on our agenda is another proposed proclamation. In our continued efforts to remain a diverse and inclusive community and to show support for LGBTQ+ citizens, I move the following proclamation. The Town of Wellington Board of Selectmen proclamation. Be it hereby known to all that the Town of Wellington hereby recognizes LGBTQ+ Pride Month. The Town of Wellington recognizes that June is celebrated nationwide as LGBTQ+ Pride Month and that our great nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all. As a community, Wellington is inclusive and strives for diversity. We welcome all people, everyone should be able to live without fear, prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. The Town of Wellington does hereby proclaim June 2023 as Pride Month to honor and celebrate our LGBTQ+ citizens. Let us as a community continue to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for all, dated this 5th day of June 2023 at Wellington, Connecticut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. I apologize. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make one comment, being a native here and having grown up in this community and going to Hall School here, going all through the schools here. That was a long time ago, and things like this were not discussed. But as I grew up, I realized things like this were part of our lives. We just didn't talk about it. And I think it's appropriate that we admit that we missed some things, and we talk about the things that are part of our everyday community. And just like we accepted people with different last names, say, before, we learned that there's a lot to accept in our lives. And as someone in the audience commented, "It takes nothing from us to be decent people."
I think that was a good, that last comment Mike made, "It takes nothing to be decent and show respect for others." So, nothing more to add.
No, I think this is a long overdue statement to be made by the town. I would like to see it moving forward made annually. I think there's always more we can do, and this is just a place to start to let those people in our community know that we respect them, and this is a safe place for them. So with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I will stop inside. Thank you. Moving on. Mike on with us? We have, next item is to award a vendor for a codification project. And this is an ARPA project for codification services of our town ordinances and regulations. So we are zoning regs. Mike and Robin, Mike Damato and Robin Campbell worked together on this project, bringing it before ARPA. And so, Mike, I'll let you speak.
Yep, so this was approved by ARPA several months ago. We went out to bid for the actual codification services. So as Erica mentioned, this will involve the review of all of the town's ordinances as well as all of the regulation language, so zoning regs, subdivision reg, inland wetland regs, timber harvest regulations, and aquifer protection regulations. So essentially, what they will do is review all of the regulatory language that we have. They will review it against case law. They will review it against anything that has changed recently at the state or even beyond pertaining to updates that are missing. They will also review for consistency. So if we reference something that no longer exists, or we reference an ordinance which the town has not actually adopted, they will flag all of those inconsistencies between the various code documents for us to fix. Then they will update everything, and it'll go online into their, what they call an Ecode 360. It's through the web, and basically makes all the documents searchable. You can download them, you can view them, share them. It's mobile-friendly. If you've reviewed the town's ordinances now, you'll find that it's just a scanned PDF document. So it makes them more accessible. And then it will, moving forward, it will track all of those amendments. So you'll be able to see when an ordinance was adopted, when language was amended, when the language became effective. So, as I mentioned, we went out to bid. General code was the submission that we received. They, as part of their bid package, included dozens upon dozens of towns in Connecticut that they work with. And I've got familiarity with them, and I know their ability to bring a project sort of start to finish successfully. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the process, or they did come in at the requested amount, so it will be within budget.
All right, so Mike, we had just the one proposal before us, and I apologize. I'm not sure this needed into your packet. So your request to ARPA was for the 99, 95?
It was for 10.
It was for 10, okay. And the optional components, was the estimated price to implement gender neutral language in the code? Is that not something we need?
I don't see anything specific, at least in the codes that I deal with, where I think that's necessary. I don't think we have those conflicts. It, that, we could certainly, I could certainly review that with Robin if she felt the ordinances needed that. But I don't think that that's something that we couldn't identify internally, that we would need to pay for that service if we felt we needed to make the change.
I just wanted to be sure as we, potential motion is made with a cost. And then the ongoing costs, would that be split between the town clerk and your department and Land use?
Yeah, yep. And I think that's something that we'll, we plan to absorb, so I don't foresee a request for a budget increase going to the Board of Finance next year for that.
Great, we love to hear that. All right, so this is the proposal, you can see that the slide so maps out what they would do, and this was the cost, and again, that was the optional cost.
And what was the problem that precipitated this, that we said, "Hey, we gotta..." Mike, you maybe clarify that?
So, there was, I mean, the problem, if you will, is that right now, we're all, all of these documents are sort of being managed independently, and they haven't been comprehensively reviewed. They're also at varying levels of accessibility from members of the public perspective. I personally know that our zoning regulations refer to ordinances and procedures and processes that, when adopted, were supposed to have been sort of executed by the Board of Selectmen or others. And this is many years ago, for example, driveway ordinances. So we've got sections of our regulations which say shall be in accordance with. And then we don't actually have what those criteria are. So what we want to do is really use this process to make sure that we identify all of those gaps.
So one of those, like going backwards, when we adopted the PA 490 ordinance, it was something that was mentioned repeatedly in the POCD and referenced an ordinance that didn't exist. And so we clarified that. So part of this will pick up on all of those other things. There are multiple items in there. It's similar to a process that the Board of Education underwent with their policies. Gosh, many years ago, I was just coming onto the Board of Ed at the time, and they were finishing up the process where they utilized the services of CAPE to do that, to review those things. So it's a similar concept. utilized the services of CAPE to do that, to review those things. So it's a similar concept and I think a great service, and they can make sure that we are up to date with all these things, and then keeping them available for townspeople and access to the ninety-three sixty.
Well, I've also seen that many communities have struggled when when they've realized that certain regulations they have in the community are no longer in congruence with state laws. The state rules have changed over the years. No one in the town was really aware or realized that the law had outgrown what their local ordinances were, and they were essentially in conflict. And there are towns, if if you look at the the information about this kind of thing, there are towns around us that we think of as being pretty well put together with zoning regulations that are actually now in conflict with state law, but were not when they were ready.
And it looks like I'm gonna do rough math here, probably close to seventy communities that they're currently serving in the state, both city and town. So I will make a motion. I will make a motion to award a general code contract for codification services in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion?
Do we have to include the maintenance portion or not?
No, that was, that's not the spending money on that.
Got it. This is from ARPA, are using ARPA funds?
This is ARPA funds, that is correct. The initial investment is not coming out of the budget, yes. And I think it was important because they had talked about the absorption of the ongoing costs, because that was a question that came up there, right? We always want to talk about how we don't add to the budget.
And we don't approve ARPA spending, but we approve the town engaging in contracts.
That is correct. Anything over five thousand dollars. The spending has already been approved. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. But don't go anywhere. Item is awarding, potentially awarding a contract for the land use scanning document project. So part of the basement issue, the dirt basement issue, we had some moldy documents down in the basement. We had most of that cleaned. Mike and his staff worked to identify and work with the State Library to identify documents that could not have been salvaged, but it left boxes and boxes and boxes of documents in a manner that they are not serving us. They're not categorized, they're not filed in any way, sitting in a basement. The intent was for staff to utilize the dozens of free file cabinets we got from Yukon Surplus in the basement and to begin to do that ourselves. But we had staff had reactions to some of the documents. And so it made it very challenging to be able to do this, and it is an incredibly amount of documents. So Mike had added a five thousand dollar request in his budget to Board of Finance this year to undertake this. At the time, we didn't really know what it would cost to have someone come in and scan these documents so that they'd actually be available. They're things we have to keep for a lifetime, and they'd be available for residents. The problem is, they don't have access to them now. And what we found is it's much more than five thousand dollars. I said to him, if we have some funds left over in this fiscal year, maybe we should take a look at getting this project done so that we have properly maintained our documents. That would make the State Library happy, would make me happy, Mike's office happy. So we put out an RFP for this. We received one quote back, and it came late this afternoon. Mike, you want to talk about your request to Board of Finance for this?
Yep. So once we, my my original intent was to use the five thousand dollar recurring line item to basically chip away. The big problem we have is not at, I mean, this this issue that came up years and years and years ago with the documents not really being categorized, not being stored properly is a problem, and it's something that we've been working over time, as Erica explained, to solve. The 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 bigger issue is we don't really know what we have. So if you come into our office today and you say, I want to know who poured the concrete foundation on my house, because I'm going through the process of, you know, having, you know, with the insurance company, or or I'm purchasing a house. If I don't have the document already scanned, I don't know if I I've, I have the information you're looking for or not, because everything is, was essentially put into boxes and for many years just left uncategorized. So this process is as much about protecting the files we have by getting them indexed and scanned as it is about actually identifying what we have. So so not only are they gonna scan everything so that we've got digital copies, which we can continue to post online like we do now, but they're also gonna index everything. So when completed, we will have a database of where everything is, what everything is, and we'll be able to make those files available. So we are, based upon the estimates that we have, we have about five hundred and seven thousand sheets of paper is is the estimate that was provided. And through the funds that we receive from the Board of Finance, and then savings within the land use department and building departments, we're gonna basically cobble all of that together to get ourselves through what I hope to be a significant portion of the total volume of documents that's there.
So what we have before us is the estimated cost for the entire project, it's just over eighty-two thousand dollars. But we have fifty thousand, about, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in funds within your budget, savings within your budget, and then funds allocated by the Board of Finance. So while that number is daunting, we we only have a certain amount, and we we know we'll do the whole project, but maybe we'll be surprised and won't be as much as we think, because they're guessing based on the size of the box, boxes, correct?
So, yeah, so the gentleman from Rico was there today in the office. We went through everything again. We looked at all the cabinets again. And and what the, what he will do is they're gonna do a test scan on one drawer. They will do one, effectively two boxes, which is one file cabinet drawer. They're gonna run a test scan for us, and they will use that to give us a determination of exactly how much of what we have they'll get through for that amount. So that's why I'm asking it to set it up as a not to exceed, because it, you know, we may be able to get through more if if it comes out better than expected. And also, because we have a little bit of time left in the fiscal year, we're gonna use whatever savings we can at the end to to apply towards that. So that exact dollar amount, because it's only June fifth, may fluctuate slightly. So that's where the not to exceed comes from.
So I'm gonna make a motion so we can have some discussion. I'm gonna move to award Rico a contract for the land use document scan project in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Jim. Discussion?
The, just again, how did you come to the fifty thousand?
Mike had twenty-five thousand dollars allocated from Board of Finance. They transferred that from our budget, the selectmen's budget, into a capital, did they move into a capital project? I see our Board of Finance here on there too. That, so that was twenty-five thousand, coupled with the savings within Mike's budget. They believe they can cobble together the, another twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's all within the current.
Money we have.
So instead of returning that money, which we would normally, we're using it to to get something done that really, you know, we should never have let it get to.
We'll see how far fifty thousand.
Yes, yeah, and you know what, how, all their estimates were, you know, once they get in there, so. If it can do a large portion. We spent a lot of time and money making sure the basement was free and clear of mold and healthy environment, and this will sum up that project that could be really important to do, and not going back to taxpayers for additional appropriations was another plus. So I think.
The only thing I would add is that, so the intent here is, you know, we're carrying that, the five thousand dollar line in our operating budget for scanning. The intent would be to complete this and then eliminate that five thousand dollar line from that yearly recurring. This is not something that, everything that we do now, we digitize, so this is not a cost we will carry into the future. We won't digitize documents as they come in, and once we get the historic file scan, this cost goes away because we're doing it as we go now. So the hope would be to get this done, eliminate that from the line, and there's no recurring costs, there's no hosting fees that we pay, we own everything, they give it back to us with a hard drive that gets given to Robin, put in the vault as a sort of a tertiary backup, and there's no additional cost after that.
Which is good until it goes the way of the VHS tape.
Is the town clerk doing something similar with their records? Are they taking every year to take a little bit of money, I think, and scan some of that old stuff?
And and these were.
Going forward, they use the same, or a similar scanning product?
Yes, I don't see us ever getting back into this. This was, these were our documents that were housed in a storage facility many years ago, prior to my term. The budget didn't allow for paying for that storage, so that then first selectmen said, bring them back here, and we put them in a dirt basement. So not the best way to handle them. And then for many years, I know I processed our work to get the concrete poured down there so that we could change the environment. That took a long time before we did, so we need to do better with maintaining our records in the State Library, to say they were disappointed in hearing about another mold issue in Wellington was an understatement. So this will, this will take care of it, because we are digitizing as we go now.
And even though we're digitizing, and we still need the whole lot of those documents.
Correct.
That they're in the process, the state is in the process of revising their document retention schedule, but that's kind of the issue for us, is that pretty much everything we we have to keep for the lifetime of the structure. So as stuff comes in, it just accumulates over time. There's some things we can get rid of after ten years, once we've asked permission. And we did ask the state if they're, if we could potentially leverage grant funds through them for some of these things when we were dealing with it, and they said basically no, because they felt that it was a completely preventable thing that the town should have seen coming, and so as we move into their updating their policies to allow for digital document storage, one of the reasons why everything goes into laser fiche is that that is a cloud-based system that's backed up offsite, so it should hopefully meet those criteria if and when that ever happens.
Seeing no further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, the next item is our annual propane bid. You have before you copies of the bids that we received. We solicited six propane bids. We received back four. I will note that two of them were from the same company. One was delivered by mail and one was hand delivered. Yes. Yes, so the propane contract is for the dog pound, the public works garage, the library, and Wellington Fire Department number one now. How much do I need right now, for me to be seen? And this will be effective July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. It is an annual bid. It's redue last Friday, June second, by two P M. So we have Superior Energy. This was received on June second, and it was for one, a dollar fifty-four nine per gallon. A hundred and seventy-five dollars was their regular labor rate. A hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour was their after-hours labor rate, and one seventy-five for the holiday weekend labor rate, and no trip charge. The Superior Energy, I'm happy to say that the bid received on June first was identical. I was looking forward to seeing if they'd be different. Again, a dollar fifty-four nine per gallon, one seventy-five each for regular after-hours and holiday and weekend labor rates, and no trip charge. High-grade gas, the bid was for a dollar thirty-three five per gallon, and one hundred and nine dollars labor rate for each regular after-hours and holiday weekends, also no trip charge. And holsterment propane was the last bid we received, and that was a dollar forty-five one per gallon, a regular labor rate of a hundred and forty-nine dollars an hour, and after-hours and weekend labor rate of two hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the no-trip charge there. So Troy, do you have a recommendation for us?
I would recommend that we use high-grade. We've used them in the previous years, and we've never had an issue with them. They're great all, when I call them, if there's an issue, they're out within hours. So I would, my recommendation, we use high-grade.
Two of these we have used in my time and had pleasant experiences. So purely based on financials, I will move to award the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four propane contract to high-grade gas as per their bid of a dollar thirty-three five per gallon, labor, regular labor rate of a hundred and nine dollars, an after-hours labor rate of a hundred and nine dollars, and a holiday weekend labor rate of a hundred and nine dollars. Second by Mike, any discussion?
Yes. You were mentioning the facilities it covers.
Yes.
Don't we have other town facilities with propane? Library, Wellington Hill Fire.
This is what it covers. The bid covers the library.
Did you say all of those?
The library, the dog pound garage, and Wellington one.
What about Wellington Hill?
No. But they have, they have not typically been on our propane bid.
Because it's in the budget for propane, and there are propane tanks there.
It was not spelled out, nor has it been in any number of years.
That is why it's not on the contract, yes.
Not that it couldn't be, but it wasn't on the contract. So.
Yeah. I was told that those tanks belong to another propane company. You don't own those tanks, so you can't have another render fill.
And that might be why.
That might be, because we own all the other tanks we own on our own.
Okay.
Yes.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you, Stuart. And that was a much discussion when the fire department was changing from oil tank to propane, which was.
Yes, I remember that conversation with Stuart about it, yeah.
Yeah, they hold so they can get in on those. All right, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of the vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, tax refunds in one. I will move to refund Jenna Eldridge an overpayment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have no old business tonight, although we certainly have other things to talk about. We did not intend to put them on this agenda, as we had originally anticipated, other items. That brings us to President to Speak. Again, if you can identify yourself with a record, and ask you to leave yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone in the room present to speak? Mr. Tella?
I think Tella's been doing a real, sort of, compliment, Mike Miles. I've had to work with him in a special manner of few weeks, and he's been doing a great job, so. But one point here to touch on is, we had around a hundred people show up to the last town meeting. The town has had problems getting people to show up to these meetings, and I completely understand why. It's hard to have a family, full-time job, and attend town meetings. The town says they want people to have more, have more people participate, at least that's what they say, and actions clearly dictate, contradict what they're saying. Before we say we follow Robert's rules as an excuse of how we performed last week, just note during joint session with Board of Education another week, you had a board member joking how these rules are not followed. As like many government agencies, they tend to pick and choose one that's appropriate for such agency. First issue is that item four was called to question with many people still having questions and comments to be had. Sure, some of, some may have been repetitive, and many walking into that meeting already had their minds made up. However, that doesn't mean we take anyone's voice away. There are many times during meetings where board members are given the ability to retract their motion after being told they can by the chair. That was never stated to the gentleman that called to question. The fact that where there were many town people still waiting to talk should have been noted, but the town failed to do so. If people don't have a voice, then why are they gonna feel like they need to come out and participate? Boards especially, S B C crying, saying they don't hear from the people. Gee, I wonder. Another point is having the ability for one to come and vote on an agenda item and leave right after, instead of having to listen. Another point is having the ability for one to come and vote on an agenda item and leave right after, instead of having to listen to the hearing. In prior meetings, it has been said across many boards that special meetings cannot have items changed. And if that's true, along with there being no statute saying one can't vote and leave, then we should allow for all people in town to have the ability to vote during the set hours. I have heard that there was something in writing saying this can't happen. However, in chapter ninety, which is chapter that oversees town and other community meetings, there's no mention that this cannot happen. Section seven, tab five, is possibly the closest section where language that dictates needing to be there to vote. And that's if you want to twist the interpretation of that section. It states in any town, quote, "In any town, the place of holding town meetings may be determined by a majority of the voters present in voting at any town meeting, especially one held for that purpose." It does not state, end quote. It does not state one must stay the whole duration of the time to be able to vote. It actually doesn't even touch upon condo in regards to voting when considering duration or in person to be able to vote in that section. It primarily focuses on determining where the location would be, hence the title for that section being, quote, placed, end quote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room present to speak? Only once or twice, anyone online present to speak? You should be able to unmute yourself. Breathe your hand. Anyone present to speak? Last one more time, anyone present to speak? Alright, seeing none, I will move to Good and Welfare. Mobile Food Share will once again be at the Town Office Building this Wednesday, June seventh, from eleven to eleven-thirty. Reminder, it is open to all residents as well, in Wellington, as well as the state of Connecticut. The seniors do a bread distribution, and so that is moved, has moved on Wednesdays to the seat, back to the senior center. So if you wanted to get bread and then food share, you'd go from the senior center back to the town hall. Please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants if you can. I'll remind folks, the June thirtieth, the tax office will once again be closed to the public. The last day of school in Wellington is Thursday, June fifteenth. I want to congratulate all of our eighth graders and wish them good luck in high school, whether it's E O Smith, Wyndham Tech, or another school of their choosing. And congratulate our high school seniors, who are graduating various days next week from E O Smith, Wyndham Tech, or any other private or magnet school. We wish them well. We are incredibly proud of the work that they've done and hope to hear how they do in the next chapter, whether that be college, military service, trade school, or general workforce. So good luck to all of those. Concerts in the Park begin next Wednesday, June fourteenth, from six to eight P M. at River Road Athletic Center. So grab some dinner, grab a friend, come sit down, listen to some, some great music. And our monthly update from Troop C for May, there were a total of three hundred and eleven calls for service that included twelve accidents, twelve criminal investigations, no burglaries, one larceny, and a hundred and ninety-six non-reportable matters, and five total arrests. Motor vehicle enforcement, there were eighty-five total traffic stops, two onsite DUIs, two arrests, one misdemeanor summons, thirty-two infractions, twenty-five written warnings, and twenty-six verbal warnings.
I have two items.
Yes.
Well, fair, and I'd like to add to the congratulations, the fourth graders, who like George and Wheezy are moving on up.
They are.
And having one in my household.
Wow, excited.
And I also would like to mention I had kind of a proud of living in Wellington moment on Memorial Day. Had a busy schedule, but I made sure to find time for my daughter and I to march in the parade. I've marched in the Memorial Day Parade for many of the years since childhood in Little League and my hall school and various other things, and for coming up on forty years now in the fire department. And it reminded me why I was glad I made the decision to march in the parade and participate in that function. And although the crowds are smaller these days, there are still people who come and watch and wave, and the sense and pride in my community was a little bit renewed, because it's been, particularly with how the world operates these days and how people discuss political discourse and opinions, particularly online, it's become more and more challenging to keep up the esprit de corps. And I had a lot of faith in Wellington renewed when I participated in that, and I thought about this is what Wellington is. This is, this is a thread that connects the whole fifty-five years that I've been here. And it made me, it renewed some of my pride in Wellington. So to everyone who participates in that, thank you for doing that for me.
I echo those sentiments, Mike. It was, I always wish there were more people that would come out. So just because you don't have a child out there, you know, someone who's speaking or a veteran, I think it's important for people to come out. It's a really important occasion we honor, but seeing the young men and women in the ranks of our fire department taking a lead on Monday was really, gave me hope for those of Wellington, so kudos to them. And thank you for your service.
And we have almost ten, I think we're just short of ten junior firefighters between the two departments right now, which is very encouraging, because we all started as juniors or teenagers, and including me, we're aging out.
Yeah.
And we need those people coming in behind us.
I'll add to my notes, there is a resurgence of Cub Scouts in Wellington. There's a, a couple of parents who are stepping up, so hopefully we can bring Cub Scouts back to Wellington and start to see a little bit more action there. Our Girl Scout troop is up and running. There's sixteen eager young ladies in Girl Scouts, so if you're interested, come out and sign up. And I am proud to have signed a proclamation honoring Pride Month for June twenty twenty-three that will proudly hang in the town hall. And we'll share that out in the public and know that if anyone needs to know, they have a place here. Dump down it. So with that, and no other business before us, I will move to adjourn at eight-ten.
Second.
On the data will matter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.